Of the Elmont Township Planning Commission to order at 7:00 PM. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for the invocation. Dear God, please bless our planning commissioners, grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen. Okay. Mr. Secretary, would you do the roll call, please?
Yes, sir.
Nick?
Here.
Kevin?
Here.
Tracy?
Here.
Dan?
Here.
And we have absent Andrea, Brian, and a who would be our?
We still have a vacancy.
We still have a vacancy, okay. Okay. Uh, read the minutes. Everybody had a chance to read the minutes, review them. I know there were several iterations with some, uh, edits and so forth. Any comments, concerns, additions? Motion to approve regular meeting draft two minutes from the November 13 meeting.
Support.
Motion has been to approve the minutes from, uh, Mr. Jacklony and supported by Ms. Pulinsky. Any further discussion or comments to add? All in favor? Aye. Any nays, no nays? Motion carries. Thank you. Correspondence, we have two pieces of correspondence here. So we'll leave that one for the late agenda. First item is, I don't know what it is, because it's not, there's no return address. Ah, it's a notice of public hearing. Oh, wait a second. This is for comments. Someone made some comments. Need corrections on some pages. Uh, it doesn't say who it is so far. Master plan, there's some comments here. To be, the population of the village reached. Not certain. Oh, oh, okay. Access to the settlement was provided by a stage route. So this person wants to know if it was supposed to say stage coach. I don't know that that's. I'll read the paragraph. The population of the village reached 888 persons by 1840. Access to the settlement was provided by a stage route. They want to know if it should say stage coach route, which I could see the, I could see the addition making it a little more clear.
Stage first class as a coach.
Well, it's a stage, well, stage coach. I don't know if there was a, now this person did not sign it. There is no return address. There's no, so I don't know. I don't know who this is. But there are several, that's the first item. The second one, out of the railroad line track. This was extended with, plenty with the stage provided access points for the regular stage service was provided. So they want to add, they're proposing that we change or add the word coach after stage. Yeah, for, it's carried. I'll forward this to you, Dennis.
Okay.
Alex, probably have a copy of this. Then also something being, and there's some other edits in here. They don't say who it is, so I don't know. I think it would have been polite that they actually give their name and who they are and actually address us, but there's, there's a handful of edits here. Seeing as how we're still in the public hearing portion of the master plan, I'm going to submit this to the secretary for inclusion in the minutes. And forward to our planner, Alex, to review for clarity.
And consideration.
And consideration. Yeah. It, it, there may be some edits there that afford some clarity that someone feels is necessary. That's item number one. Item number, then I think it's.
It would be appropriate to get seven copies of this for the January meeting.
That's correct, yes.
And then we all agree or disagree.
Yeah.
Roger that?
Please. I don't know that it's necessary, but I think it would have been a nice plan if they actually put their name to it. Just that semantics. We would certainly hold them accountable, but we are a community and we all have to work together. Next item is from Eagle, the Environment, Great Lakes and Energy Group. Looks like it's a Michigan Solar Communities Guidebook. It looks like there's some, there's some contacts here, some different websites to find as far as looking into the item further down the road here. As far as planning zoning for battery storage systems. So I think this might roll well into item number three under old business. I'm not certain how to get, get copies of this. Maybe I will take this back and I will ask for seven copies of this item. Seven additional copies to share.
Do you, you're going to contact the?
Yeah, I'll, I'll look at, unless, is it more appropriate for you to do that, or is it?
It's, it came to you, so.
Okay. I will put that on my to-do list and get those copies before the next meeting. Or as soon as possible, anyway. Any other correspondence that anyone knows of?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I had sent everyone legislative alert. There has been the governor assigned House Bill 5557 amending the Michigan Planning and Acre Act to include housing. I think Alex has done, covered that under our master plan, so I don't believe it's an item that we need to be concerned about. But I did want to bring it to the Planning Commission's attention that it is now a bill.
It's a law.
It's a law.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Anything there? Anyone else? Anything? Correspondence wise, okay. Moving on to public comments. Slow down, everybody. Don't everybody rush at once. State your name.
Bonnie Kraus, 4705 Glover Road. Good evening.
Would you mind? Say your name.
Bonnie.
Bonnie?
Kraus, K-R-A-U-S-S. Need the address?
No, that's okay.
I've been here a couple of board meeting and planning commission meeting, and there was some talk about putting the master, draft master plan on the website. I looked, I could not find it. Has it been put up?
I was told that it was on there. I didn't personally go look because I haven't had time, but.
I was told the same thing, and it was supposed to have been done.
And, and I was looking under the planning, you know, area, so.
I'll, I'll follow up.
Okay, yeah, yeah. And then the agendas, those are not available on the website either for the planning commission meetings.
That is correct, and that conversation did take place either last meeting or the meeting before. I don't recall. We all felt that that was a shortcoming that should be addressed as well. I don't know. I don't know who handles that. I imagine that would be to the supervisor to make sure that gets done, but I.
Current supervisor isn't familiar with putting things on our, our website. So I know he's working with someone to get that person trained so that this information will get on the website.
That would be very helpful. Thank you.
Those are the things I think the board is looking at to improve that website, Bonnie. There's a lot of improvement that needs to be done. So I think along with what Ida said, there's some options of looking at hiring a consultant and then turning it over to someone, a staff member that's currently on to sustain it or maintain it or whatever. So, yeah, it needs a lot of work.
It does need a lot of work, just from, I'm used to being able to go onto the website and pull down the entire work packet for the township board and the entire packet for the planning commissioners. That's all available online before the meeting. So everybody has an idea of what they're talking about when they're talking about it. So it's, it's real handy too.
On the master plan, it is on here. I did find it.
I just wanted to be able to see it before the meeting.
Yeah, the draft master plan is on the website. I see it, yes. It's under. Yes. It's under public notices.
That's another part of it, too. You got to do a little searching.
It's under public notices.
So I, I Googled it. I just put in Elmont Township Draft Master Plan, and it came, was the first one. So sometimes depending on, it's not a great spot for, because it's a notice, but it's Planning Commission, you know.
I went to the website, so that was my first thing.
Or that, yeah. But I personally think something like the master plan should be on the homepage, especially while it's in it's public hearing. You know, once it's completed, it can go wherever it goes, but while it's.
As it's a current item that's, that's up for discussion.
Right, right on the, I mean, the master plan.
This is something we're working on.
Right, yeah.
I agree 100%.
I, I checked out the village's master plan months ago, and it came right off. So it's been on there with the draft as well.
All right, I will, uh, I don't know if that's something I need to do or Andrea needs to do. Get ahold of Gary Supervisor.
I think that's my job.
Is it your job as secretary?
As board rep, as well as, more as board rep. Go back to the board and say what you gotta do.
Well, I mean, today you're secretary, but is that a board rep thing? Okay.
I think so.
Okay, thank you.
I'll take care of it anyway. Either one, whatever title you want to use.
Another public comment. I don't see any, so we'll close. Do you have anything else, Ms. Kraus? No? Close the public comments section, and we'll move to late agenda items.
Mr. Chairman, I do have the letter of interest that was received from Barrel Charge Michigan and Interpower. They are showing an interest in providing a DC charger for citizens. It would be on their property on Van Dyke, 3576 Van Dyke. And I'm just bringing it to your attention. And do you want to discuss that under new business, or you can discuss it now as you please?
Well, I think we have to put it under new business, maybe for next month, to determine if there's any actionable item that we have to address. Without reviewing any of our ordinances or zoning plans, I don't want to make that broad statement and say that it's a issue or a non-issue.
So that would be January 18th, I believe, the the amended date was?
15th, I thought. I thought it was 15th. So.
Oh, yes, January 15th. I have my hand over it. Sorry.
Where are all of these? Are you sure supposed to be?
I thought we had to review those today.
Yeah.
Or is that a January meeting?
Pardon me?
No, that's a January meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's the first item of business in January. Other late agenda items that anyone knows of? No? It says introduction here, but I don't know what introduction of what.
I think that'd be more appropriate, Mr. Chairman, for next month when you have new members or something.
Yeah. Public hearings, I don't know that we have any public hearings today, so this must be just boilerplate. Just. Yeah, new business. We don't have anything listed under new business. I think, uh, onto old business, which leads us to Mr. Jacklony just brought up a motion to reschedule our January 8th meeting, 2025 PC meeting to January 15th due to holding our public hearing open for the master plan until then. Any, pardon? Because of the new members, right? Is, any discussion or any, anything anybody want to add to that?
No, I think it would be if we can get the master plan completed. I know there was talks of pushing it to February. If we are able to wrap it up in January, I think it would be a benefit.
We should be able to.
Oh, I know, yeah.
And then we would recommend board approval, and they would finalize it in February.
Either of you?
Motion to reschedule the January 8th, 25 meeting to the 15th.
Support.
Dennis is, you do, okay. Uh, let's take vote, roll call, or not a roll call, but just a, a just a straight vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Any? No? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Now, the proposed, item number three. No, number two, I'm sorry. Wait, those were the same.
No.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Now, now that it's been moved to January 15th, now we have a item on the agenda, a motion to extend the public hearing until the January 15th, which would lend itself to what you just said. Any discussion on that, any thoughts, any additional information?
I will move to extend the public hearing on the Elmont Township master plan until January 15th, 2025.
Motion was made by Dennis to extend and supported by, who said it first, Nick? They take, Nick said first. Supported by Nick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None?
Note on that, if we go off the date on this agenda, the year is wrong.
It is, isn't it?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
I just didn't know where you get your numbers from for the minutes, so.
You're right. I got to learn to type into 2025.
It's coming fast, isn't it? Okay. Now on to item number three. Apologize. Jumped the gun there. We have a proposed renewable energy and energy waste ordinance that's been prepared. Been prepared by our planner, and we also have a template, more boilerplate for one as well. Dennis, you found this, didn't you, Dennis?
Yeah.
Yeah. Dennis assembled this to review this. Take it away, Mr. Alex.
Yeah, I know, we're pretty much having an open discussion here. So you, you have a, a draft of what a proposed battery storage facility ordinance may look like for you guys. We can, you know, I sent you guys the other day. We have some comments from, from Brian on the planning commission. Stuff that Dennis shared as well. So there's a lot of things floating out there, and you know, I, I know that everyone feels as if this, we talked about this to length, so not to repeat myself, that we feel wind, solar, battery storage is kind of, you know, coming at the township in some capacity, so knowing that there's a lot of here, a lot of, a lot to talk about and discuss and deliberate. You know, my thought is if the township would, if the planning commission is interested, can form me a, a subcommittee to kind of meet independently of the planning commission and have scheduled meetings to just talk about this that, you know, include perhaps other leadership positions, including PC members who are, you know, engaged in this discussion right now. And kind of, you know, we could elaborate more on this rather than just taking up valuable time at PC meetings and just, you know, kind of.
It's a general consensus.
Yeah, so I would, you know, my thought is, I know there's a lot of ideas. I believe that we could definitely get that pen to paper and put it together. It's just that it's a little bit more of a process than coming to the planning commission meeting and just talking about it. I think it needs to be a little bit different in the sense of, you know, a subcommittee that can meet on probably, probably more flexible terms. You know, where, you know, we can just either meet in person or via online. I can share drafts, they can review, we can discuss it, and then come to a conclusion of what fits best for the township to present to the planning commission.
Is that meeting, that meeting is not held to the Open Meetings Act standard?
It is, it is, certainly is.
So how would we?
So you could, we could share that information wherever it's scheduled, and people can join whether it's online or in person. That doesn't change.
Yeah.
It's just that, you know, rather than, you know, getting the people that we, you know, perhaps it's my, my, my recommendation that, you know, get those, whoever it is in the township board, or outside property owners, or obviously PC members to be part of that discussion, so that we're not just working in silos. I think we'd best to have a, a group, a subcommittee forum to, that can explore this. I think that would be with a focus and, you know, kind of a timeline. There's a lot to digest, there's a lot of things to consider. And I think it's worth me saying, I understand that there are concerns about wind, solar, and battery storage, there's no doubt. We know the state has approved this law, it's already taken effect. Someone can come in and just go through the state and just put it right in your backyard. Love or hate, it's not, but there, there is a lawsuit out there. Several commute townships, counties involved in suing this, because the legislation is, you know, has some challenges. With that being said, I think we have to find a way to have a balance, because if, if it's too strict, too cumbersome, it doesn't even have to come to the township. It'll just go straight to the state. So we have to find something that's important to the township. And I know we're in this gray area between workable and non-workable, and what does that even look like? So having, I think, the appropriate PC members, leadership, property owners, whoever it may be, that you guys feel should be in that room. We could discuss that and have a constant, you know, focused effort to perhaps draft material to then present to the PC or the township board, or however you guys feel is the appropriate measure.
I'd like to propose, volunteer myself here a little bit. I think there's more than adequate information that Alex has gathered. We've got the MTA document, I've got the Chesnein ordinance, I've got what Brian put together, and I'd like, I think I could take those documents and draft an ordinance for the planning commission on solar. If we're bringing in battery and wind and all that other stuff, and I guess that was a question, the way Brian wrote his, it's a renewable energy ordinance that covers all three. Alex and I talked about whether we want to do that. I don't want to get bogged down with things that are not a clear and present danger. I think solar is a clear and present danger. I don't see batteries or wind clearly that critical for our township at this time. And I don't know if it's smart to drag out, bring in batteries and wind at this time, when I think we've got a pretty damn good handle on what we'd like to see in a solar, commercial solar energy ordinance, from what we learned out at the Demille plant. I think I could take a shot at that and draft something, but the committee is not a bad idea because Mike Chase is a, is a pretty good asset, and he's on the township board. He's a retired DTE executive.
Mike Chris.
Mike Chris, yeah.
My thought on that was to put on the agenda for January to see the reception of the new people, who would be interested in being on that committee. And actually, at that point, making an agenda item, an agenda item to either start the committee or table it.
Okay. I guess the question is, are we looking at three different ordinances or a renewable energy?
Absolutely, it's three. There are detailed specifics that need to be addressed in each one.
They're distinct.
That's regarding, related to wind, that doesn't relate to battery, there's things that relate to battery that doesn't relate to solar and vice versa. These have to be three separate things. And so the state has said, this is the threshold. And so you're allowed to create your own ordinance and deviate from that standard because of the fact that it's under 50 megawatts and 100, you can have your own ordinance of a, of a project under that. However, with the politics and how it's, it's, we've talked before, someone may say, well, great, mine's above that threshold. I understand you have more regulations or requirements than the state, but I'd rather go through your local process as opposed to going through the state. That's up to them. It appears to me that most operators of these alternative energies want to go through the local process and get the buy-in from the community to make it a win-win. Understand that, you know, that in itself is a touchy subject, but we're faced unfortunately right now, as it stands, as the law is right now for the state of Michigan, they can come into your community. And we're trying to strike a balance there's where if there was a project, it's something that the community can, can work with. So it's equal protection of the applicant, equal protection of the community. Otherwise, it just goes to the state, and they'll just get their approvals. It may take them some time. That's what they don't want to deal with, is that one-year-plus-ish timeline to get approvals. They'd rather come in the community and go, you know, come before you and maybe get it done in six months. I don't know, right? I've dealt this already in a few communities, and I've shared that. So I think it's, I, you know, like I said, I, I don't want this to drag out. I'm saying this publicly. I don't want this to drag out. I want it to be focused where we can, because other communities, I've mentioned a few folks up the road. There's a, a big divide in that community between one board and a committee, and they don't see eye to eye, and so nothing's been done. It's been dragging out, and it's a long time. I think we can create something that's that fits this community's needs, and then if things change, we can make amendment there, right? That's the process and the stewardship of this, of the planning commission and township board to address things. It's not static, things are quite fluid. It's, it is challenging, no doubt. It's, it is challenging, no doubt. You know, communities are pretty split about this and rightfully so because for a lot of reasons. So I, I think a community would work best just that we can get the opinions and views of folks that are in this township that I think can contribute to the conversation so that we can find a balance for you guys. I'm happy to facilitate that. I've done it already with communities. I, I see where the pitfalls are. I think that yeah, right, wind might not be really an issue, but battery, I'm not sure, not really, but solar is. It's, it's, it's happening. So yeah.
There's good news and there's bad news. I guess I'd like to take a shot at just drafting something for the January meeting on solar. And then like you said, Kevin, come back in January when we have the full board and talk about the committee. I am really confused about what you put out on the batteries. This is really something. It's scary.
Well.
Because I don't know whether we're talking lithium ion or
Sorry?
I'm not sure whether we're talking lithium ion or, or lead acid batteries.
Sure. And I understand there's that public safety concern on that part, right? And I, I don't know. It, it, so that part there is a variable that we're not certain of because we're not sure what that applicant is coming for you on, right? So there, those are, that's part of the discussion with them. So we need to have a bare minimum of what standards are, but yeah. I don't know. The technology changes, right? And so these are things that I've been provided from my partners at MTA along with our experience as to what to look at. That's a very new thing in Michigan. There's only one op, one operator in the whole state of Michigan of battery storage at this moment.
It's not.
There's one.
There is one.
Only one. Right. I'd say always one operation right now that's going on of that type.
Aren't they always affiliated with the, either a solar farm or a windmill? I see no need to have a battery bank sitting in a
No, they, they do because they store the energy at night for, from the grid.
They store the energy from the panels because it can't directly hook up into the grid because it's too far removed. So they hook it up. There's these batteries that look like semi trucks.
Right.
And they put it on there and they get all the energy and it goes from the inverters into that battery.
So it's, it's the source that's charging those batteries are either wind or solar.
Correct. And so to get that
These go hand in hand because there's no energy, energy being generated at night or when the wind's
So it goes into that and so they take that to a station where it then gets put into the grid.
So they're mobile, potentially.
Yes, they are. They look like semi truck trailers that are pretty robust are up there from what I've seen in my experience.
I've seen the pictures of them in China. You're, you're a first shot at this is not a mobile type battery thing, right?
That's independent of it's mobile or not. We're talking about safety concerns, safe backs, all that sort of stuff around there. And I, and that's the thing, Dennis, you're bringing up great questions and I appreciate it. And that's part of the having that
Committee.
Committee to put that together to talk about these things because you know, we have language that we've worked with, not just myself, but I've worked with other communities and other attorneys and other groups that are sharing, you know, this ecosystem of how do we tackle this? What's the best practice, you know? This, like I said, it's fluid. So that's the best I have right now in front of you. And I just put the pen to paper for you guys and give to you. You know, so we can work on these things and talk about it, but it's never going to be absolutely perfect. It's got to be something at least in, in place and then we can continue to address it and make amendments. It's a living, breathing document, just like all the other, you know, things. It's just, it's, there's no silver bullet at this time because the technology will change.
I guess my point is unless we had a solar farm or a windmill, we're not likely to see a, a battery.
To my knowledge, no.
Right.
To my knowledge, no.
So they go hand in hand.
Yeah. The thing is, is the likelihood, I'm not saying, but you guys have high power transfer lines in the community.
Right.
Does make it advantageous and you have pretty flat terrain, not a lot of water. We know that from master plan information. You know, it makes it somewhat, I don't know how you can even say that Michigan may have ideal for solar panels, but that's what they think. So.
We know that some of the, we know one farmer that's been approached and the, and the price tag
I know who he's talking to. I've been in the room many times.
And we know that the price tag is in the millions for him.
It's, it's
Twenty, twenty years.
I don't know all those details, but
Yeah. So it's, it's here. You know, how do we walk a fine line protecting the health, welfare and safety of the community? When we know probably 90% of this community will not tolerate either wanting their solar energy farm or a windmill?
Once again, that's an excellent point. I mean, I've, we've had, you know, that operator brought in experts between sound, electrical engineers, a late, a, a, a professor, this woman from Michigan State University who is an expert in panel technology. And talks about the advancements that have been made and what it really is. That's, we're dealing mostly with glass and steel and very small percentage of actual like, what is it? You know, just metals or whatever it may be. I mean, you guys visited the city of Lapeer. I mean, I'm not saying that advocate for this, but the city of Lapeer has no issues.
Right, they don't. And DTE went out of their way. There's, there's no hazmats over there.
Nothing.
There's nothing that's going to leach into the soil or it's the aesthetics.
Right.
My home built next to a 500 acre solar
People don't want to see it.
Right.
I don't want, if I don't see it and I don't hear it and it's not a problem, then it's not a problem. That's, that's really what
Somebody else's backyard.
So like, look, I mean, that's, the problem with the state is that the setbacks are, you know, small, right? And the screening is minimal. So, and the sound is a little bit less than people would prefer to have. So that's the rub. So can we, you know, increase the setback, increase the, the, the screening? And make sure that we have appropriate standards for sound and they may go for it. And, you know, I've seen particular operator, you know, provide a community a pretty good offer of what they're trying to do. So there is a win-win scenario that, that does exist. There is that possibility. Not everyone's going to be behind it. But, um, you know, you do, fortunately for you guys, you have a great example just down the street. And I just happen to know that community well because I'll be there all day tomorrow, 12 hours. Doing the same thing I'm doing here. So like, I feel strongly that a committee would work well and we could sit down, discuss it. I can, I can bring with the overall framework of how this process needs to be and how we can harness the, the potential of this community. You know, if, and if it came to your community, you can find somewhere and there's still gonna, there's still gonna be a process. It's not a sure thing where they just come in and do whatever they want. They still come before you. They still have to present. You still get to ask the questions. And there is a lot of site design stuff, just like any site plan review you do, that needs to be considered. That's, that's still on the table. That does not go away.
The, the challenge, I think, is special, special land use. With the, with the four affirmatives that you have to find to approve the special land use. That's tough. For either one of the, I mean, the cell tower was bad.
It's for the applicant to demonstrate. It's for the applicant to demonstrate, you know, that they meet these standards.
Yeah. So I think, I think drawing up the requirements for what the site plan has to address, like setbacks, noise, environmental, water, recovery, decommissioning and all that kind of stuff. Yeah. I mean, that's, that's relatively clear cut to me. I mean, these ordinances that we have in front of us are pretty clear cut. And I think the MTA ordinance, it's a quote of workable ordinance is, is not too bad.
The workable one that they are providing you is almost to me, in my staff's opinion, is no different than the state requirements.
Well, that's, that's what I was wondering if the state's going to
It's pretty darn similar.
Okay.
And so folks now are working on the, the gray area of what is workable. So for me, you know, you have a right to have an ordinance for your community. They can choose to play and, and, and work with you guys on this. They can also choose to go to the state. So it's a balancing act.
I mean, as far as those sorts of things, I think that, that draft or, or example is pretty good. Where would, to me, because I think, I don't remember seeing a battery facility over at the
I think they can feed right into the lines.
They do there. So they're not generating electricity at night. They're shut down. So I'm almost thinking if we're going to allow batteries, we put it in an industrial zone. Nowhere near.
Well, you know, the, the thing, the thing with the solar is it, it helps with the peak. The peak is during the day. You've got your air conditioning running. You've got your industry is active. Your commercial zones are more active, right? Your stores, shopping malls, so forth are drawing, they're not drawing all those things at night. So it, it strikes a balance and the battery is not necessarily advantageous. Can we have that put on the agenda for January?
Already done.
Thank you. On to the reports section. Mr. Planner, anything?
Just like there's a lot of trainings available, guys. It just came out last week. So I'll just read off a few for you. And I'd be happy to share all of this list from Michigan Association of Planning. In January, there was a, a, a well, for brownfields, tax improvement, tax credits for, for housing, how that works. There's a site plan review workshop. There's a community engagement workshop. There's a blight, a webinar, a managing risk webinar. There is a planning essential, uh, planning and zoning essential workshop at Frankham move and also the next day virtual for two days in the afternoon. So it's like $95. And then getting the, the development you want, it's, it's also in person and virtual. So there's some great trainees coming up into the winter and, and spring from Michigan Association of Planning. So if you said, I mean, I can send you the link. I can have, you know,
I think we get them in, they're listed in the magazine.
Yeah, they're listed. Right. So there's just email just came out like, and if you're interested, I would recommend if they're in person, sign up early so that, you know, it doesn't fill out. But the virtual ones are great because, you know, you can do them at home and things of that nature. So there's some great research. There's great stuff on there. Yeah.
Just to comment, I, I've made it before, but I'll say it again. I was not a fan of online learning, but MAP does a fantastic job.
I've been doing the last two weeks, this week and last week, a, through Michigan State extension, they bought this program. That was the National Shorette Institute for like, you know, large scale master plans. And it's a total of 12 hours of online training plus probably another eight to 10 hours of reading. So it's going that way. That's all I can say. There used to be in person in Portland, Oregon and I'm like, yeah, it's not, it's online, thank goodness.
Thanks, sir. We, our engineer is absent, so we'll have to forego his monthly report. Tracy, zoning board of appeals, any news, any items?
Nothing.
Nothing exciting?
No meetings, no.
Okay. So everybody's happy with their zoning then?
Must be. Must be.
Zoning and building report. Item.
Okay, for next, next month, I will, I have on the agenda, the election. The 2025 open meeting resolution. I see from January 2024, we had Richard Tapper, a fan of fireworks. So let's see if he shows up. And then I have the business that we did tonight with having the letter of interest from Interpower and Bureau of Charge on the DC charger stations. And then the reschedule of our meeting would be January 15th. And the public hearing on the master plan will be held. And then we will also have again, the solar wind battery. And hopefully we'll have Dennis's draft and possible going, getting a subcommittee going.
Okay. Excellent.
So we would have a resolution when we sign off on the master plan. I think you've already put that together, right?
Yes.
Resolution of adoption, do you?
Yep. I will send it, I will send it again to make sure that everybody has it. You're going to get another one.
I, I have it. I, I was just, my next question was going to be, this will come later, January, January.
January, yes. You, if you adopt the master plan, you will sign the resolution and then it will go to the township board and then they, they already have their resolution to adopt.
Oh.
To accept.
This says vice chair, if Andrea's
If Andrea's
It will revert to her?
I would put Andrea down, but she says she may be here January 15th. She says her, if her surgery went well, then she would try and be here January.
I'm only addressing it so it's proper on the form. It doesn't matter to me one way or the other.
No, that, that's fine. I, I will make the change if Andrea can guarantee she'll be here.
Okay. Any other discussion, thoughts, concerns?
Just on, I had a go on over next month's agenda. I know we've kind of talked about it before and I'd like to maybe dive into it a little deeper next year. Is these renewed special land use or permits, like for fireworks, for example? We talk about how Almat is kind of hard to do business. And I feel that's one thing that if nothing's changing, I personally think we should find a way, if we can, to make that administratively. If they've been doing it in the same place for 10 years and nothing has changed, why do they have to come?
Exactly.
Well, point.
Okay. It, it just, you just hear it from so many people who do business in multiple communities of how much does the head of, you know, and I, we want to, don't want things to get out of control, but something, you know, shango every year, same thing, same place, same time. Phantom, same place, same thing, same time, you know, is there something that we can do?
Being it's a temporary thing.
And it's, you know, it's essentially a renewal of a 2014.
Uh, 2019 for Phantom. And shango was like 2011, 12, 13.
Whatever.
But it, it is driven by the original motion that it has to come back. So I'm not clear as to what you would do to
That's what I'm saying, just dive into it.
There may be an ordinance issue there that has to be addressed.
And I just, that's, I just think, you know, going forward, it's not like an emergency that we need to do in January.
I can, I can talk to Adam when we look at the zoning ordinance and see what
Just if there's something going forward, you know, we could keep on our radar, you know, in the next year to make things a little bit.
Because you, you, usually a temporary use is a temporary use, but because they said they would be coming back every year, the planning commission at that time made the motion that they would have to come back every year to renew it. And then you would review their performance to make sure that they were compliant. But there may be a way around that. We'll, we'll look, we'll look to see.
We're not a regulatory body. We're
You are correct. Yes. So I will look further into see what can be done as far as we may have to, as Alex indicated, you may have to go in and do another tax amendment.
Some areas just do it as a zoning permit.
Yeah.
Accessory use to the zoning permit and then it's just administrative.
Yeah, you could do that.
Look at that. I mean, and that's a good point to look after. Like I said, after master plan, you look at those potential tax amendments.
Fact is, it would be probably a good thing over the holiday to start looking at the zoning ordinance and marking up what you think needs to be amended or revisited. Why is it this way? I think we've come across a few things this past year that Yeah.
Back to another committee, I'm not, I'm not kidding you because I think there's a lot of things that need to be reviewed in that A to Z or of things that need to be reviewed in that A to Z, or page one to page, whatever. I mean, we brought up fire hydrants on site, those sorts of things.
It's not, it's not something you're gonna find normally in the township, no.
I agree with Nick, I think we need to fix things that are antiquated or...
And if there's nothing we can do, then there's nothing we can do. But at least just maybe dive in a little bit more of that. You know, and it's kind of, the applicant's time is valuable, our time is valuable.
Yeah.
You know, I think it...
There's things you can do on that, that's...
Right, because I'm certain that every community doesn't. When we heard, last year, we heard from Shango's rep that this is the only one that they have to go to, and that just kind of makes you wonder that, you know, if it's a new tent at Smokehouse, well, certainly.
Yeah, yeah.
But if it's in...
If it's an ongoing business relationship, right?
I agree, because when I look at their applications, I'm looking at the same thing you do, and you don't see it until I see everything there, so it's a repetition, it's just, they're going through another step. That may, yeah.
Well noted, Nick, thank you.
So that's an agenda item for January.
January sounds busy, I mean, I'm honestly fine if we...
Maybe just, maybe just as a discussion item.
Right, or just as a discussion item, just to touch on it again and see...
If there's interest.
Like I said, I, I personally don't think it's like a emergency, you know, we have to do this next month, but just, you know, next year.
Well, we've got some new members, we need to wet their ears a little bit with some things that have been going on.
Right.
Makes sense.
And get the feelings of, you know, the two or three, well, vacancy and the two, you know, missing, maybe no one agrees and they want them to come, then, fine.
I do a lot of zoning permits, so this would be easy to do.
Well, it sounds like you're already doing the work anyway, it would just...
Yeah.
Streamline the process a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah, you could do a tax amendment if you wanted to.
Still need their inspections from the fire department and electrical and...
None of that would change.
None of that would change, so what we're doing is... Right, right, that...
And they always have their insurance, so...
Oh yeah, that's one thing that I make sure they have. It's a multimillion-dollar insurance policy.
That gets us to the last item on this list. Anyone? Adfirmment?
So, Ida, you have no other, other than the comments on the master plan that Kevin received tonight?
Uh, I have not received anything. Mr. Chairman, there is one more item, I almost forgot.
Back it up a bit.
2024 annual report, that will need to be submitted in January.
That's not me. Yeah, yeah, my last one.
We're gonna have a hard time filling those gigantic shoes you wear there.
Well, you know what, you guys just wear...
I can't believe you waited through all that stuff.
We are gonna have a hard time filling those gigantic boots.
I appreciate that, yeah.
You have done a yeoman's job, and I, I could not do it. I, I will make it well-known that I could never do that job.
I appreciate that, Kevin. I guess I got the luxury of being retired, maybe that helps.
I will touch base with Andrea too, because the person who was interested in the recording secretary job didn't show up tonight, so I'm gonna find out if she's still serious and if we need to put something out again.
Weather's a little maybe touchy tonight, maybe we'll give her the benefit of the doubt.
Yeah. It's Michigan.
Yeah. I had no trouble. Of course, I only live a mile away, so, I mean, you know.
We address the adjournment? All in favor? All opposed? None? Motion carries.
Seven...
7:50, well, let's go off of this.
7:55.
7:50, yeah, like 5:4, but whatever. Yeah, 7:54.
Officially announced.
Sure, yeah, they got it. You don't want to see it all.
Good job, Kevin.
Thank you. We get paid by the meeting, so...